Good morning, Mr. Manager.
Good morning, sir.
We ready to go?
We are. We have two issues today, sir. We'll call this Land Management Day. Dale's going to talk to us about tiny homes to start with, and then Trish Parker and Mark are going to present on an appeal process for appraisals. So we'll let Dale go first and start the discussion.
All right, Dale, I see you've got your red on.
Yes, I notice you all have jackets on, but since you're TV stars, it seems like it's always very hot in here to me, but...
Oh, I thought it was for OU.
Well, that too, but I don't have a lot of expectations.
(laughing).
Okay, the topic today is whether or not the county is interested in moving ahead with some sort of regulation related to smaller homes that are smaller than the market's average, affectionately known as tiny homes, and I'll call them tiny homes for lack of a better term at this point. But I've handed out kind of just a thought piece that I'm going to go through real quickly to try and get to your comments, but I thought it would be helpful for you to have the background for everybody to start from the same place. And so there's a very brief PowerPoint that I have here, and what's up on the screen is all of the SF5-zoned property in the county, and you have slides and a full-blown map of this. The county has 770 square miles, and out of that 770 square miles, there are 1,444 acres of SF5-zoned land today in the county. And the reason why I'm bringing that up is, the question is, is the construction of a tiny home on a lot or lots of 20,000 square feet or more an issue? And so that's why I'm focusing on the SF5, because the SF5 zoning would allow for a tiny home to be placed on a single lot in the areas that are red. However, the majority of the area, the largest single piece is this up here in the northeast, that is the county's parkland that I believe was originally intended to be a landfill, and then the city transferred ownership to the county, and so that's all under county control today. Then the next largest pieces, or larger pieces, are part of Crestview that are already platted and developed on both sides of 143rd Crestview, and then I think there's Crestview at Overbrook on the east side. And then the third largest pieces are down here in Oaklawn, and then Deer Lake Estates on the east side. Now Deer Lake Estates, from what I can tell, appears to be developed as a mobile home or manufactured home subdivision, and these areas are nearly all developed. I didn't really see too many vacant lots. The one exception is, let's see here, there's the county parkland that's undeveloped. This is Crestview that's virtually all developed out with Overbrook on the east side. There's a small subdivision here, and it's mostly developed, if not completely developed. Oaklawn, for some reason, this is a separate plat, and based on the aerials, as far as I can tell, there's no development there, and I don't know what the background is on that, but Oaklawn, otherwise, as you know, is developed, and this is Deer Lake Estates. And then there's a subdivision down here that is nearly empty. It's platted, but there's nothing there. And then there's, this is a single ownership on the north side of Kellogg that has a single home on it. And then these tracts are split into three different ownerships. This is one, this rectangle, there's another smaller one here, and then a smaller one there. And then this is a platted piece of property that's undeveloped, and that's undeveloped. And so what you can see is, there's not a lot of SF5-zoned land that would be able to be developed as a brand-new subdivision because it's already developed, although there are, clearly there are some areas that have vacant, that are vacant, but there's not a lot of opportunity for a tiny home subdivision to go in on the existing SF5-zoned As background, by definition, a tiny home in the adopted building code is anything that's smaller than 500 square feet. And the city and the county both adopted that in the last few months. It's Appendix Q, and allows for some variations in the building code if you decided to build such a house. In the county, the majority of the land is zoned RR, rural residential, has a minimum lot size of two acres. And then the next zoning district down is SF20, and has a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. However, if you're proposing to develop a single-family home on it, and you're not on public sewer, the minimum lot size is an acre because of the sanitation code, not because of the zoning code. And so basically, in my opinion, the minimum lot size is going to be about an acre, because I don't think there's a lot of land that is eligible to be hooked up to a public sewer to allow for that half-acre development unless they're proposing to be annexed by the city of Wichita or one of the other cities and be served. There is a definition for single-family in the zoning code, and that's in the report, I won't go through that. There's also a definition for a dwelling unit, and the zoning code specifically lists single-family as a use type and describes which zoning districts it's allowed, and it's nearly all of them, but I think there are three zoning districts, or no, four, that don't allow single-family development. So let's say you were zoned LC, limited commercial in the county, then theoretically you could build a home there per the zoning code if you had the minimum lot size and all that sort of stuff that applies. A tiny home on wheels, as you, those of you who've been on the commission for a little while, saw conditional use here a year or so ago, those are considered to be recreational vehicles and are defined in the code as vehicle, recreation. And so those are not allowed in SF5. You have to have special zoning to have a recreational vehicle. The zoning code nor the subdivision regulations establish a minimum lot size for a single-family home. Theoretically, under the building code, you could build a house legally as small as about 150 square feet. And if I'm messing things up here, why, they'll straighten me out here. But what I understand is, there is a requirement for 75 square feet of living area, and then approximately 35 square feet for a bathroom, and 35 square feet for a kitchen area for roughly 150 square feet. Is that... Yeah, okay. Of course, nobody's doing that, but theoretically you could, because of the way, because it would, as long as you meet the building code. Now, obviously, a house that small would have to utilize the tiny home Appendix Q regulations probably to meet the building code, but theoretically it is possible. The zoning code, as I said, the zoning code nor the subdivision regulations establish a minimum dwelling size. One of the issues that came up in the recent project out southeast was, the developer chose to go through a requested annexation process where they go to the city and specifically ask for the city to annex them, and in the zoning code, if you are zoned SF20 or RR, then when you're annexed, as part of the annexation process, the property is converted to SF5 zoning, and that automatically allows for a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet. However, within the zoning code, within that SF5 district, there is a cluster development provision that would allow you to go down to 4,000 square feet per lot, provided that for every square foot you go below 5,000, you set aside an equal square footage in permanent open space. So in effect, the dwelling density unit is the same as if it was SF5, it's just the individual lots themselves can be 4,000 square feet. Now, on that 4,000-square-foot lot, you could build, setback to setback, a 1,600-square-foot house, even though it's only a 4,000-square-foot lot. And I think Wes could confirm this, that I think the average size of new home being built is around 1,800 square feet. Is that...
Yeah.
So give you that as a comparison. And so that process, the requested annexation process, is not something that the county has a role in, so the county commission would never see it. The other issues that came up with the tiny home development in southeast had to do with notification for plats. There is no state law, no local regulation that requires the city or the county to notify nearby property owners either with a published notice in the newspaper or with individual mailed notice. Now, with a zone change, as you're aware, there is state law that requires that, in the county, you notify everybody within a radius of 1,000 feet, and in the city, the minimum is 200 feet by state law, but then the planning commission has a policy that, based on the size of the application area, it can go up to a thousand, to a radius of 1,000 feet. And so, but on plats, there is no state requirement for doing that. Per Planning Commission policy, they are required to put up one of our red and white development application signs 13 days prior to the Plan Commission hearing, or for a plat, for the subdivision hearing. And then for annexations, for requested annexations, there is no notice at all. It's not required, and since that's not a county activity, Law could correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe you have any, the commission has any way to regulate that. It would be a city council decision. The other thing you need to be aware of, in the county, if you wanted to put a home of any size on unplatted property, the minimum lot size is 20 acres. If you plat and create smaller lots, then it's based on your zoning. If you get RR zoning, then you could create lots as small as two acres. If you get SF20 zoning, you could create lots as small as a half-acre, as long as you're on public sewer. If you're not on public sewer, then the minimum lot size is an acre. The MABCD permits and reviews onsite wastewater and onsite water well applications, and so those go through the MABCD and not through the Planning Department. There also, there is no notice if you're issuing a building permit. So if you have a platted lot, and it meets, and you want to get a building permit for a single-family home, then you just go get the building, you go get the building permit, and nobody gets any notice on that. So with that, that's kind of the background. So I guess what I would be after today is, A, is there a majority of the commission that wants to proceed with some sort of regulation relating to homes that are smaller than whatever the size is? I will tell you that we did some comparisons to other cities, and for example, like Overland Park, in their subdivision regulations, you can't build a home smaller than 864 square feet in Overland Park, period. Legally, I don't know how they're getting away with that, because I would think that the Affordable Housing Act would come to play there, but they're doing it, and then some other communities also have standards, some of them are like 640 square feet, and so there are a few communities that do have a minimum house size, Wichita and Sedgwick County have never had that. So I guess the question is whether or not the commission has any interest to move ahead with some sort of establishing a minimum house size with minimum regulation. The end of the report has some different options, but I think the key thing is, A, there's no real reason to look at the options unless there is an interest with a majority of the commissioners to move ahead with some sort of a zone change amendment to the zoning code and address it that way. And so with that, I'd try and answer questions.
Thank you, Dale. Do we have questions? Mr. Howell?
Yeah, I thank you for the presentation, and I think the reason you're here probably is because of me. I asked for us to, I guess, rethink, you know, what we're doing in Sedgwick County and verify that it's something we're happy with. And a couple of things you've mentioned today, I have a couple of questions about a few things. First of all, I don't want to, my friend, I don't want to regulate on aesthetics or value. I think it's been clear to me that that would not be constitutional to do so, and I think that would be challenging in court, and we would lose. But it sounds like we have the option of creating a classification based on the fact that this is very different than I would consider to be normal housing. I'd call it non-standard housing, and it's not just tiny homes, it's also other things that are sweeping the nation. I think right now the cargo container housing, I would say is very similar to that. So, you know, if we want these things to go anywhere without any thought, then we do nothing, but if we want to, you know, have some special handling on these types of things, I think we ought to consider what we can do, and I understand this has no bearing on cities, because cities have their own rules, and so this isn't going to change what happens there, but there has been numerous, I'll just say, there's been numerous discussions about, you know, small home subdivisions in the incorporated. Now, whether, how they get there, I don't know, but I, one of the questions I had for you earlier was whether or not they can do a community wastewater system for a subdivision, if that's possible.
Well, the only way it would be possible is if the county commission approved it, as MABCD folks could verify this, but if you're going to connect more than one home to a sanitary sewer onsite solution, then that requires a community lagoon or a community permit, and the county commission has to approve that.
Yeah, if that technically works, I would have a hard time seeing us say no, simply because if somebody wants to do that, I would think we probably would want to, you know, empower them and enable them to do what they want to do. Generally, that's our philosophy, is we support, you know, property owners and what they want to do. So I would be surprised if we would not approve that if that was proposed to us, but that's just...
What I would tell, what I would tell you, and I'd let David chime in if he wants to, is, the county got out of the sewer business several years ago. There were numerous lagoons and onsite systems that the county ran and maintained, and then, for whatever reason, I don't know whether KDHE or whatever, they ended up closing those all out, and the city took over Four Mile Creek, and as I understand it, the county is out of the sanitary sewer business, so that would be a change in policy to go back to it. Is that correct, David?
Well, the other thing is, you know, you said that, you know, the notification is not required, and one of my questions would be, are we allowed to do what's, are we allowed to do notification if we so choose? Could we implement a policy that would essentially inform people of what's going on? Is that, would that be allowed, or if we wanted to go to do that, or is that something that's not allowed?
No, I think that's certainly within your purview, that the issues that you would need to address are, if you decide that you wanted to do notification on plats, for example, then we probably would need to increase our plating fee to account for the mailing cost, and then it probably would slow down the plating timeframe, because they would need to get the title, they'd need to get the ownership list from a title company. And the last time I checked, there was a minimum charge of $150, and if the number of names exceeded the $150, then it was $1,250 a name beyond that, so for whatever that's worth. Because right now, a plat, I believe, you turn in a plat, and 17 days later, it's at subdivision committee. So in order to get an effective notice in there, if you were to use the 20-day notice like they do on zoning changes, we would need to extend the time that it takes to review a plat.
What's the cost for a plat application right now?
It varies with the size.
Can you give me a range, maybe, or kind of a minimum number for something small?
You know, I don't know. I haven't looked at that in a long time.
Okay. Is there anything that would stop someone from, you know, rezoning an SF20 or RR back into SF5 if they wanted to? I mean, that's just a process they can apply for a zone change, and of course, if they're not doing the annexation at the same time, that would trigger a notification and a hearing.
Right. A zone change would, that is in the county, would go through the planning, go through Plan Commission, the city, or County Commission, and you would have the ability to review and approve or deny that application. And in my opinion, creating urban lots in an area that doesn't have urban-scale lots or is not served by public sewer would be potential reasons to deny the zone change.
One of the things I think is very curious here is the fact that something could be SF20 or rural residential, and it could be annexed, platted, and rezoned. Essentially, the county doesn't have a say in any of that. There may not be any notification other than the red and white, or the red and white sign you talked about. That's something we choose to do, I guess, it's not required, but we choose to do that. So the annexation, the rezoning, the replating, could all three things happen without notification, without a hearing, and I'm not sure, even if the governing body actually has a vote other than maybe one vote for the annexation, or I'm not sure exactly what they vote for, but they vote one time for the whole package of changes, it sounds like.
Well, no, actually, the plat and the annexation usually, not always, but sometimes they go through a separate request, sometimes they go through as the same request. But on a plat, the subdivision committee and the planning commission both have opportunities for public testimony, assuming that someone sees the red and white sign or is aware of it, and so there is opportunity there. Because plats are considered to be ministerial or administrative, it is almost impossible to deny a plat that meets the minimum code requirements.
Well, just for the record, I'm not against tiny homes, I just, what I'm concerned about is transitional, you know, we, transitional housing. We regulate multifamily housing, we regulate manufactured housing, we regulate all, you know, many other things, but when it comes to this particular topic, even though they're very much different than I would call, I call standard housing, we don't seem to have any consideration for the fact these are different. You know, even, you know, mobile home parks, for example, are regulated where they would be. And I understand that the home base development is not like that, they're very upscale for what they are, but the fact is they're very much different than what's around them, so that's the concern. There seems to be no transition thought, and they're just considered the same as any other SF housing.
And I think that's because in the instance of a mobile home park or a manufactured home park that's on wheels, they're transitory, they come and go, they can, they can have a manufactured home subdivision as well, where they're put on permanent foundation, but manufactured homes that are not on permanent foundations are taxed as personal property and not treated the same way as real property. And so I think that's one of the distinctions there. What we're talking about here would be a home of a small size, whatever the magic number is, that is placed on a permanent foundation and meets the building code, whereas manufactured homes do not meet the building code, they meet the manufactured home housing code that HUD established in 1976.
I see Mr. Gallion in the audience today. Thank you for being here. One of my, one of the conversations I had before, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this is, on one side, if you're the developer of one of these additions, you're going to be very, you know, you want to have freedom and less regulation, less cost, and I certainly support that, but on the other side, if you're building very upscale housing, you don't want one of these right next door, because it might hurt your ability to continue to market those more upscale homes. And so I, there's two sides of this coin, and I don't know what the right answer is, but it's not, you know, being a guy that supports private property rights and wants to empower the developers to do things that helps this community have all sorts of housing options. I think this is one of those things where, the very, the very different nature of this type of housing ought to have some type of special classification. And I don't know if, you know, there's a couple of options in the back, I think they're all reasonable. I don't know, we haven't gone through them yet, but I do think that this is our chance to maybe spend a little time to talk about different solutions. I think we ought to do something. If we do nothing, then that's fine, but I think we as a board ought to clarify our position on this, because this is coming, whether we like it or not. This is one of those things where we have multiple proposals in the county for this type of housing, and I think we have a chance right now to address it, and I think we should. So I'm in favor of some of these options, I'd like us to talk about that if we have to.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Okay, so are you, are you saying that like if somebody builds big, great mansion, right, and then the property next to them is a little home, is that your issue? What is your issue?
My concern is, is that we regulate right now, there are various types of construction projects by zoning, because we'd like to transition from, you know, heavy, you know, heavy industrial all the way down to multifamily housing or...
No, we have, we have a residential area, and you have a big house.
We don't allow mobile homes right next door without zoning.
I didn't say mobile homes.
I understand that. But yeah, I think this is non-standard enough.
I'm just confused as to what your problem is.
These are non-standard enough that I think they ought to have some type of special classification.
Standard meaning that they're not like the typical status quo big mansion? I mean, if somebody wants to live in 100 square feet, what do we care?
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Could we, could we get, since Wes is here?
I was going to ask you to.
Well...
It's a good idea.
It's your idea. It's your idea. Go, Mr. Chair.
Well, he's coming up, just to clarify, on requested annexations, you have to either touch or be across the street from the city limit line, just to make sure everybody's all on the same page. You can't be an island not touching the city limits and be eligible to be annexed, just for clarification.
Say that again.
Well, in order to do a requested annexation, the property either has to abut the city limits, or you can be across the street from the city limits, but you can't have county land intervening or separating the proposed area to be annexed without it being an island annexation, which the county commission does review.
And we just did that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Down by McConville.
Yeah.
Neil and I are not related, by the way.[1690.15][1690.15](laughing). Depending on what he says, we might not even be friends, but just, he talked to you a little bit about tiny homes, and whether it's a phenomenon or not, it's oftentimes referred to as that, but I think the tiny home movement, if you want to call it that, and I think it is, more so in some parts of the country than others, has a direct relationship to affordability in housing. If you, you can live on the street, or you can live in a shelter, or you can maybe live in a small home. And I think a lot of younger people are opting for home ownership or, you know, a smaller home, because they can afford it, they embrace more of a minimalist lifestyle, and that's okay, there's nothing wrong with that. I think the fear is, and getting back to what Jim said, and what you asked a question about, Lacy, is that if I have a million-dollar house and somebody wants to put a $150,000 house beside me, then I may be open to that, and there's some that are, but I think because of the way we've been oriented in our lifetime, the value of our homes are important to us, so we don't want it smaller, because it might lessen the price of value of money. And that's a philosophical debate more than anything else, I think. From our standpoint, we prefer the market determine what's acceptable and what is not. There are reasonable requirements in place today through plating and zoning, and if you meet certain requirements, you can, you can cite the house or the, on the property, you have to have sewer and water, or a private sewage treatment system, or a well, or whatever else in order to do that, and that's always been the case. When this issue first, this issue never became, in my view, and I work with 300 and... When this issue first, this issue never became, in my view, and I work with three hundred, three hundred builders all the time, and another seven hundred people that are involved in supply products and services. It wasn't a big issue. Some would look at it and say, "That's kind of cool." You know, you see those off-grid in Colorado sometimes, or whatever, and you do. And people think that's cool. They don't live in them, they visit and stay there a while, but they, they come back, but they like the experience. And some do live in it now, and some of those communities are starting to do tiny homes because the price of housing has got to the point that the workers cannot, they used to live there, can't come in and work in that community because they can't find a place that's affordable to live. And that's too bad. That's something that needs to be dealt with. But, I think the issue here is when, when Brady and his, his partner decided that they would, his girlfriend decided that they would do this small homes project out east on that southeast part of town that got all of the attention and the lawsuits filed and everything else, everybody said, "What are we going to do about this?" And I said, "What do you mean? What are you going to do about it?" They've met all the zoning requirements, they've met the, the plating requirements, the subdivision regs, and whether or not it'll be successful will be determined by the market. And so, you know, that's a wait-and-see type thing. I've looked at their product, I've talked to them about the product, they're looking at something around five hundred to about six hundred square feet, thereabouts, probably will end up selling those units from somewhere to come a hundred up. They were initially talking about seventy-five to a hundred. I think they'll be a little bit higher than that, just because of cost increases and requirements that they had to meet in order to do that. But, we'll see how the market responds to that. But, the reality, I think, is this, one thing that's happened with the discussion of tiny homes, and we don't call them tiny homes, we call them small cottages, and there's a lot in the verbiage that you use. Upscale small cottages, small cottages, whatever. I think the one thing it's doing, it is, it is stimulating discussion in the marketplace about what we can do to put affordable housing back, back in place. And we just took our entries for the spring parade of homes. The entry level home ten years ago was a hundred thousand. Don Klosmire, Richard Needens, and some others would build those homes, and build them well. They were nine hundred fifty square feet, nine hundred thousand, had two or three bedrooms, a full unfinished basement, two-car garage on a single-family lot, and they were selling for a hundred thousand. Today, the house is a hundred sixty thousand. So, what's happened is, just by the sheer cost increases and requirements that are imposed and everything else, and land costs, whatever, the prices have gone up. If you look at the stats from the MLS operation today, forty percent of the people who buy homes every year buy homes under a hundred fifty thousand dollars. They're not buying new homes because we can't build them and sell them for them. And if that interest rates goes from three and a quarter to four and a quarter to six or seven percent, that market, that, that number gets bigger because there's fewer people that can afford what we do. So, I think there's a lot of fear in people, and I don't know that there's a lot of fear. There was a concern about what's, what's going to happen if I'm a developer and Lacy buys a piece of ground next to me and she wants to put a project in there, what am I going to do about it? Well, the market will determine what happens and what gets done about that. I don't see anybody rushing out to do that. There's a lot, there's talk about it, but I don't see anyone planning. I don't know of anyone in our organization that's planning a small home subdivision. I do know of people in our organization that are looking at trying to figure out what size small home will work, and can they do an infill project in the established central area of the city to help neighborhoods that are in decline by putting new stuff in there that are livable, that are livable by various couples, individuals, elderly people, whatever else, and improve that neighborhood. I've got one builder that's looking for nineteen to twenty acres in the established central area, hard to find, unless you do some land assembly. He wants to do homes from probably eight hundred to about twelve hundred, and sell them from a hundred, about a hundred twenty-five thousand up to about two hundred. And, when you look at it in perspective, take the vision of what you've seen in tiny homes out of your head, a two-car garage, typical, small two-car garage on typical homes, four hundred square feet, three-car garage, six hundred square feet, it's quite a good space, if you do it right. And, but it's more the look than the product. You can take a small home and doll it up and make it look really, really great. Or you can just build a box like a shed, and that's what you get. So, I think if anyone's serious about building a neighborhood with smaller homes, they're going to have to look good, they're going to have to be energy efficient, there's going to have to be protective covenants in that area, no builder would do something otherwise. So, I think there's a lot of fear about what might happen, but in reality, I don't think it's going to happen. There may be some threats of it, but at the end of the day, I understand the concern about value orientation, but I think it's being overplayed here to the point that we may, we may end up trying to pick winners and losers. I don't think that's a good thing for us to do through moratoriums or anything else you might do. I just don't think that's good. I think sitting down at the table and trying to figure out what a market, who the market is, what the profile of that buyer looks like, and seeing what we can put in place, and I don't mean junk stuff, I mean decent stuff, is the right thing to do, and because if things continue the way they are, affordability's going to become a greater issue for younger people, older people, just anyone, in terms of being able to get into new houses. So, what we'll have is we'll have older housing decay more, decline more, because everything ages to our detriment as a community, and I don't think we want that. So, I think we have to be open to looking at what's possible.
I, I think, thank you, Wes, for, you know, I, I think that, that, if we look at generational shift, I mean, think about when we were kids, when did we want to drive? When we were able to drive at fourteen years old. Think of the kids now, they don't want to drive. So, if you think about it from a vehicle perspective, think about it from a house perspective, think about what our kids are going to want when they grow up. I mean, are they going to want big old mansions they fill up with crap? No. We're teaching them to spend their money on experiences, which means less time at home. I mean, not everybody's going to be like that, but we just have to think about, I mean, times are changing, and, you know, we have to be open to that because there is an opportunity to make money, no matter what you do, is just be open to things that are different than what you'd normally, I mean, that's all I got to say about that.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Yes. Thank you for that, Wes. That, that was a good overview. I, I feel like a lot of this is just a solution looking for a problem, since we haven't even had that today, and, and is that what your board feels too, at the Builders Association?
Yeah, they don't talk hardly about this issue at all.
Okay.
They have opinions one way or the other. I've talked to some real estate agents in the community that I've known for a long time, and they sell homes across the spectrum, some of them specialize in high-end houses. What do you think? He says, "I think the market will determine the course of action, what is it as we move forward." She said, "Oh, we're in the process."
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. We throw.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Wes, and thanks for the presentation, Dale. I know this has been a lot of research and stuff, so I, I'm in agreement with, with some of the comments that I, I think overstepping regulation and getting in the way of whatever the market's going to be is probably not a role I'm preferring to play. I trust the builders, I trust our zoning and planning committee, and, and I think if, when and if that day comes in front of us, then there's enough intelligence to help solve it, to figure it out.
Very good. Any other questions, comments? I don't see anything else, Dale. I appreciate you coming up with the presentation for us. Wes, I appreciate you coming to the meeting today, and I don't see any desire to move forward with any of the different options that you provided at this time. Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Trish, Parker's now going to get up and talk about property tax appeal process.
Good morning, everyone. Well, I'm here to talk to you about the process taxpayers have to appeal their value or classification. And I'm going to deal more on the legal side. If you, if there are questions regarding appraisal techniques or, or issues regarding that, I would, I think Mark will be prepared to answer those questions. Okay, so, I'm going to get started here. Okay, as you know, notices of value and change of classification went out March first. If, if your, if a property's value did not increase or classification changed, then you would not receive a notice of value, but you can go to the appraiser's website, and I've listed it here, to download that notice, and you can flip it over on the back and, and note that you want to have an informal meeting with the appraiser to discuss your value or classification, and they'll send you a, a notice as to when that meeting will be. So, at that informal meeting, the county appraiser shows the taxpayer how the property was valued and the documents that they used or that were used to determine that value. Taxpayers may provide the county appraiser any information that they feel that would be helpful to the appraiser to consider when determining whether or not the value should be reduced. And that type of information are things such as pictures, repair estimates, you know, leases, income and expense statements for commercial property, sales agreements, rent rolls, that type of thing. The last day for informal hearings is May fifteen, and the last day to mail informal hearing result letters is May twentieth. Now, here's the appeal options. Once you get your informal, your, your notice of determination from the appraiser's office, from the informal meeting with the appraiser, if you're, if you're not happy with, with what you've got or what you didn't get, more than likely, is, if it's a single-family residential property or a commercial property less than three million dollars in value, then you may appeal to the small claims and expedited hearings division of the Kansas Board of Tax Appeals. I want to make sure everybody understands, when we talk about the small claims divisions, we're not talking about small claims over in district court. We're talking about a special board that was developed by the Board of Tax Appeals, I believe, in two thousand and four, to hear cases before they get to the regular division. And all single-family residential properties must first file an appeal at the small claims level. That's just a requirement. Land that's devoted to agricultural use and commercial property of any value, whether it's below three million or over three million, may opt to appeal to the regular board. Okay, now, there's a new appeal process that went into effect, and I say appeal process, it's, it's part of this ongoing extension of the informal hearing process or informal meeting process, and it was put into effect, I think, in two thousand and seventeen. If no appeal has been filed with the small claims division or the regular board, rather than making that appeal, the taxpayer can choose to provide, within sixty days of that mailing of the informal hearing results, provide to the county appraiser a third-party fee simple appraisal performed by a Kansas-certified general real property appraiser, reflecting a value as of January one of the year that's on appeal. Now, the, the appraiser has fifteen days to review that appraisal and, and shall consider it when determining whether or not they can make any change in the value, and whatever change we make, it would be a downward change. We never increase value up beyond the noticed value. And they need, the appraiser will have to mail a supplemental notice of the final determination. Okay, so, they send that notice out to the taxpayer saying, "Hey, we looked at your appraisal, I'm sorry, we couldn't do anything," or "We did look at your appraisal and we were able to reduce the value to," you know, whatever they reduce it to. Now, if the final determination is not in favor of the taxpayer, the county must notify the taxpayer that the county is required to perform its own fee simple, single property appraisal, or commission a fee simple, single property appraisal. Okay? The county, if they choose that option, the county has ninety days to provide the taxpayer a copy of the appraisal, along with a new supplemental notice of determination. If the determination of value, in this case, is not in favor of the taxpayer, the county appraiser must include an explanation of the reasons he or she did not rely on the taxpayer's appraisal. Once it, once a taxpayer submits an appraisal to the county, in this scenario, the burden of proof is on the county to dispute the taxpayer's value. Taxpayer may appeal to the regular board within thirty days of that final determination. So, we've got like three final determinations kind of floating around, but it's the last one that, 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 you know, is, is the final determination. So, and then they can appeal to the, either the small claims division, if, if they have jurisdiction over their case, or to the regular board. And there, then they are at BODA. Now, there's another process, the law provides, and it's a process that we used to have in Sedgwick County, and most counties had it, and it was the HOPS panel, what we call HOP. HOP stands for Hearing Officer slash Panel. The law provides for the appointment of either an officer or panel to hear appeals from the informal result determination by the appraiser. So, it's a mid-level, it's between the appraiser and the Board of Tax Appeals. But, like I said, the HOP panels were basically disbanded in two thousand and four, or shortly thereafter, when the Small Claims and Expedited Hearing Division was created by the legislature. I talked to a PVD official and asked about how many counties were still currently using the HOP panel, and to their knowledge, no counties are using the HOP panel right now. However, they said, should the county decide to reinstitute HOP, that, that was certainly fine with them, they didn't care. Here are the requirements for a HOP. Again, like I said, you can have either a hearing officer or a panel of no less than three people. HOP members must take a training program established by PVD. Now, currently, PVD has no training program because there are no HOP panels. But, again, they said, if you all decide to reinstitute HOPs, let us know so we can, you know, develop a training program. And they would do that just for us. I mean, that's because they have to by law. They also have to take, HOP generally, there's an exception to this, we'll get to in a minute, HOP members must take IAAO course one oh one, which is the cost and sales comparison approaches. And if they're going to hear commercial property appeals, they have to take course one oh two, which is the income approach to value. Here's the alternative. An appraiser who is licensed or certified by the Kansas Real Estate Appraisal Board, who is in good standing, may serve on a HOP panel, once that person takes PVD's training program. Now, HOPS, one or more counties can go together to form a HOP panel, Hearing Officer or Panel. The BOCC shall fix the salary of the HOP members. In the case of a district HOP, we have one or more counties going in. The salary is fixed by joint resolution published in the official county newspaper for each county. The BOCCs are authorized to levy a tax upon all taxable tangible property in the county in an amount sufficient to pay all the costs incurred. PVD can remove a HOP member if the director believes the member has failed or neglected to discharge his or her duties, and it would serve the public interest. Now, how does HOP work? HOP is basically, basically run by the county clerk's office, okay? They coordinate with the county appraiser's office, but if memory serves me correctly, most of the HOP, the administration, administrative functions rested on the county clerk's office. A taxpayer can, within eighteen days of the final determination by the county appraiser's office, from that informal meeting, they can file an appeal with the county clerk. Now, there are forms that were approved by, I think, PVD that provide for the appeal and the notice, and those, those are provided by the county clerk's office. So, the county clerk sets the cases for hearing before the HOP, notifies the taxpayer and the county appraiser at least ten days in advance of the hearing. At that hearing, the burden is on the county to prove by a preponderance of evidence the validity and correctness of the county's value or classification, except if you have leased commercial property, if the taxpayer has failed to provide three years of income and The, the burden shifts, if, if the taxpayer fails to provide three years' worth of, of income and expense statements to the county, the burden shifts back to the taxpayer to, to prove their case. If they do provide that information to the county appraiser, burden shifts back to the county. And again, there's no. And again, there's no presumption of validity to the county va, county's value or classification. When the HOP panel would issue their order, they have to include reasons that support the order, whether it's denial of relief or, or granting the relief. HOP hearings cannot be held after July 1, and all orders must be issued by July 5. They are recorded in the HOP minutes, and they're open for public inspection. Notice of the disposition of the case shall be mailed to the taxpayer and the county appraiser within five days of the HOP determination by the county clerk. And then either the county or the taxpayer may appeal from a HOP decision. That's it. Now, I, I do want to add a note on here that, a comment that the HOP panels were effective. There's nothing wrong with the HOP panel, and they were not eliminated because there was something wrong with them, or that they didn't function. They, they, they did function. But when BODA instituted that lower Small Claims Division, they felt that that would take care of the taxpayer's desire to have a, a mid-level hearing panel that was something prior to the regular board. The Small Claims Division of BODA does hear cases down in the counties that the property's located in, or an adjacent county. I believe most Small Claims hearings are held in Sedgwick County, usually at the Extension Office. But again, they, they disbanded because the county saw that they could save money, because you have to pay salaries, and you have some printing costs and other administrative costs to, you know, administrate the HOP program. And so, again, it is an option if you, if you want to reinstitute it. The law's still there, and it's pounded for, so it's just a matter of what your desire is.
Thank you, Patricia. Any questions? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Chairman. Just, um, thank you for the presentation. On the Small Claims process that comes through the county, is it just a single person, or is it a panel?
It's usually a single hearing officer.
Okay. And so, how, how many cases do they typically handle in a, in a normal year? Do we know?
I don't know what BODA statistics, Mark. Do you have a, any idea?
Okay.
Yeah, they're a busy panel.
So, for the informal hearing, there's no cost, there's no cost for the informal hearing, I assume?
No, there's no cost to the taxpayer.
Is there cost to any, any of these other steps? Is there a cost to the?
There's no cost at the Small Claims level for residential properties. There is a, there's a fee if they want to appeal commercial properties.
Okay. And with the?
And there's fees at the regular board level.
Very good. I had a, in terms of a HOP panel, do we have any historical records on what the costs were for that? I mean, do we know how much? I know there was a salary, but there's other costs as well, so.
Yeah, I do not know that. I think we would have to dig back into the county clerks and the county budget, because obviously, it was something that had to be budgeted for.
Okay.
But we'd have to do some digging on that one, to answer that question.
Well, the last several years, we did contract several people to, to feed the HOP panel, so we'd also have our costs.
Right.
And if someone did go through the HOP process and they weren't, they weren't satisfied with results, they still, they could still go to BODA, but then, then the Small Claims option would no longer be available to them, the Small Claims?
They would go, I think, believe, directly to BODA.
Go directly to BODA at that point? Okay. Well, one thing I do like about the panel, and I think it's nice to have more than one opinion, I guess, listening to the, to the appeal, and to me, there's value in having a, a board listen to what's happening there. To me, what I, another thing I like about it is it's always local, and I guess we would have some ability to help make sure that they're operating, you know, in a way that we think is, is good, and if we don't, we would have the option, I guess, I don't know if it would be appointed officials from the commissioners, or how that would work, but...
Well, the commissioners appoint the hearing officers. Okay? You, you do appoint the panel, or the hearing officer, and, and we, I don't think we ever went with a single officer. We always had a panel.
Right.
It's my memory. We're going back a ways for that, but that is, if, well, PVD can, can remove a, a hearing panel member if they get too far, you know, if, if there's reason. There's got to be cause to, to remove.
Commissioners may or may not like this, but I think this is, the, the panel gives us just a little bit of, of input into a process. I mean, right now, for, for, first of all, I don't think that commissioners, commissioners, I know have served on the panel, I don't think that's good. I would like to see us not serve as commissioners on the panel. That's just, that's an opinion, but I, I do think this gives the commission a little tiny bit of input into the appeals process, whereas right now, we don't really have any. And I think the idea of a panel versus a single opinion, in my opinion, that's, that's step of the process, after the informal hearing, having a panel hear that, to me, in my, in my opinion, is, is, is a benefit to having, you know, a perceived level of fairness, perhaps, rather than just having a single person give an opinion, you have a panel of people give an opinion. I think it's, it's why we have juries, rather than, you know, it's just a, it's something we tend to trust more. So, I think it's a, it's a, it's something we ought to, ought to seriously consider. I think it's a good, good option for us. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Other questions? I had a couple. What was the percent of properties that went up in value this year, Mark?
I have it right here.
Do you have it for all across the board?
Last year, I can definitely do it. I'm following after percent.
Okay, and when you're getting it, look at what the percent for last year was. This is my, my concern about having, establishing another layer of, of boards or something to appeal this process, is I, I think we're addressing maybe a small portion of it, but we're not addressing the overall issue. The overall issue, really, and I can tell by my emails exactly when the, when the valuation summaries go out.
I'm sure.
The, the, the problem is, last year, we had a large number of properties that went up in value. This year, we had a large number of properties that went up in value, residential, we had 11 percent was all, it had no change, and 78 percent increased this year. Okay? Well, that's, that's really the biggest issue, and out of those 78 percent, you had some of them that got fed up finally, to the point that they saw increases last year, saw increases this year, so now they're protesting. So, I, I don't think adding a board is going to solve the overall problem, because the overall problem that I see is 78 percent of our properties went up in value. Now, that's a good problem in one respect, because it shows that things are, are getting better. But at the same time, when you get hit, when you're a, a property owner and you get hit year after year after year, and it keeps going up, one thing we can do as a county is we can drop our mill levy if we find out we don't need the, the funding. But that doesn't control the entire problem, because you've got school districts, townships, cities, all those folks would all have to drop their mill levy in order to make an impact on, on the property tax that that property tax owner has to pay. So, I, I don't know that the solution is adding one more layer for a few people to get relief, rather than take a look at the entire issue, and how do we look at this issue from across the board? I know that all of these different organizations that I talk to, the cities, counties, townships, all have a job to do, and we all have to have money in order to be able to do that job, but the, I think the citizens are just to the point where that they've seen too many increases, too many times, back-to-back, and so, we need to take a look at that. And like I said, we can't solve it here. The only place that you could solve that is how that we do our valuations across the board, and I know that they have to be fair. We can't be doing something that's not fair to one individual, but to another individual. But I don't know if there's some kind of legislation that we need to take a look at that says, hey, if you've been hit a couple of years in a row, or so much percent that we're going to cap it, I, I don't know what the solution is. I'm not going to give you the solution here, because I, I'm not smart enough to do that. But I think we need some smart people to get together and say, what is the long-term solution, so that we don't hit people up year after year, and we have 78 percent to increase this year? I don't know what the percent was that increased last year, but it, it's something that, when it happens a number of times, there are people who get concerned. And as I said, I don't think adding another layer to, to treat is a symptom rather than the entire problem.
I, I would like to, to interject some information that does go directly to your point about controlling the increase in appraised value. Kansas law used to provide a cap, and said if you, if you, if you got a reduction and you, you could not increase that value for the next two years, you had to hold it at that level. And the Kansas Supreme Court declared that provision, that rollover, what we call the rollover provision of the law, unconstitutional, because as I said, you have to value property at fair market value every year. You cannot have artificial caps. Now, we do have a, a, the legislature, in response to that decision, they came back and they changed the law to provide that if property has been reduced as a result of a hearing, a result of an appeal, for the next two years, okay, you, the appraisers office cannot increase that value beyond 5 percent unless you have new construction or a change of classification or a change of use of the property. And so, there's that, there is that, yeah, that's, that's on, yeah, that's on, on, for commercial property, it doesn't address residential. But there's that stopgap, I guess, that, that is built into, to the law, and as far as I know, nobody has decided to challenge that particular provision.
But again, how many total appeals did you figure you're going to have this year?
Well, just to plan, I said, close to 7,000. I can tell you, as of today, we have a total of 1,213, and this time last year, we had 1,166, so we're at 1,61.
But we have thousands of pieces of property that went up in value, and, and we're hearing grumblings from a lot of those people, so I, I know that it takes some energy and inertia to protest, but I think we're seeing just the tip of the iceberg on people that are dissatisfied.
Sure.
I think there's a ton of people that are dissatisfied right now.
I understand.
So, I think some kind of a global solution is more appropriate than a, than a, a solution that treats the symptom.
Well, yeah, I, I certainly agree with your comments. It'd be nice to have a global solution, but that requires legislation, and they've been trying. I mean, they, they have, for years, passed numerous bills trying to address some of this, some of the, so they, they went from a Court of Tax Appeals to, back to BODA. They actually tried, I think this year, there's a, there's a bill about trying to freeze property, or I should say, property taxes, but let's talk about evaluations on people who are elderly over a certain age. There's that, which I think is not going anywhere. There was, when someone, I think in the, in the housing level, you said commercial a minute ago, but on the housing side, I think someone had a reduction, it was, it was frozen for a couple of years. I think that was, that was considered unconstitutional and thrown back out, or, or repealed for that reason. So, they've tried at, at the state level to address this. I understand that, you know, you guys are doing your best you can, you're following the statutes, you're following the, your objective tools you have in the, in the, in the toolbox, you're trying to use computer models and everything else. The only thing we have in place that we possibly could impact this would be, again, anything that's outside PVD or outside BODA, and outside your office, no offense to you, but would be this board. And that's why I think this is the one and only tool we have as commissioners to put something different in place right now, that, that's, it's available to us right now, it's legal, and it's allowed, but other than that, we're simply going to bury, bury head in the sand, live with status quo, which I'm not happy with. Yes, ma'am?
I, I was just going to comment that, that, you know, part of, and what you say about going outside of PVD, or the current system that we have now, one of the, the constraints or, or the issues that the appraisers office has to constantly be concerned about and watch for is falling out of compliance with PVD. And if your sales, if your values of your properties are not, are not in the, you know, the, the neighborhood of the sale prices in the market, then you're going to have that discrepancy, and you're going to be undervaluing properties, and then you're going to be out of compliance. And I think that the county was, has, has seen that when they decided to raise values, they really had no choice, because they were getting dangerously at that bottom level. So, that would be allowed by PVD. So, then they fall out of, they risk, if they don't increase to reach what the market is showing, then they risk falling into, out of compliance with PVD, so.
And to your?
That's one of their issues, I think.
And to your, to your defense, the, the market ratio study has continuously been somewhere between 90 and 100 percent. In fact, I think, last time you briefed us, Mark, it was actually a little bit low, less than 90, if I'm correct, right? So, you're actually below market right now, outside the 10 percent threshold set by PVD. So, even, even with these corrections, I'm not sure where we're going to be next time, but...
With corrections, we're going back up to a 95 percent ratio. But I can tell you, the sales are going on now, the 19, 2019 sales, that ratio is sliding fast.
So, we're going to be back towards the bottom of the 90?
We're, we're around 93 right now.
Well, anyway, I'm not suggesting, Patricia, that we would have people who would not follow the rules and follow the, the objective tools. I just think that the fact that they have, they're autonomous from PVD and the appraisers office, it's a separate viewpoint, perhaps. They have their own qualifications and credentials to do that job, they're qualified to make a decision. The fact that it's outside PVD and outside the appraisers office, to me, and it's a panel, to me, that has value to the taxpayers here, and it gives them something, I mean, again, no offense to y'all, but there's, there's a, there's an inherent distrust of the Kansas Department of Re, Department of Revenue and the appraisers office generally, because they, they believe they're trying to generate tax dollars. I know that's not true, but that's the assumption that's out there. And if I have a panel that's independent from the, that whole process of trying to create tax dollars, that looks at that and says, we're just objectively trying to determine the value of a property based on these things, we don't have, we don't, we don't have a dog in the fight, we don't care about the dollars, we just care about doing this one step of the process in a way that people understand and trust. I think that's why this is, this is a good way for us to go. We ought to, we need to, I think we ought to do this, in my opinion. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Lutz. Patricia, tell me, this HOP panel, how, did you say earlier that, is there any other county in the, is Kansas doing this?
As far as PVD, the person I talked to at PVD, which was their general counsel, although she is new at that position, she said she doesn't believe there's any HOP panel in, in the state, and I, I checked with the Board of Tax Appeals and asked them if they had received any appeals from a HOP panel, and they said they have not received any appeals for years. So, that tells me there's probably no HOP panel at all.
So, all, so, if, we would be the only county in the state that would have one if we went this step, and do we have a, do we have a size and scope about how many people would actually want to take all these courses? Who pays for these courses? How much would this, what was the financial impact on our budget be if we were going to do that? I mean, it's probably, you probably can't answer right now.
The course, I believe these courses, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, I think they run between $400 and $500, and...
Who pays for that?
Pardon?
Who have to pay for that?
Uh, well, unless you hire someone who already has those courses, probably the county.
Would they, would these be a full-time office where people could come in? Is this on-call?
No, no.
And, and, a certain number of weeks, complete that work. They will have a date, time, and location to come, and typically, the county clerk's office will run this, they'll have a sheet as to when people are coming. It's all set up on a computer, and, and when we did it before, CIS had a real slick program that we used when we were looking at cop sales and so forth, and I think that could probably be revived in some fashion. I don't know how difficult that could be, but I believe it's possible.
So, Mark, so, again, so how long would, how long would these people be on-call or in these panel meetings? Two months?
I would say...
Three months?
No longer.
You're...
I'd say six or seven weeks. No longer, I'd say six or seven weeks.
It's, it's a short timeframe.
But that, would they, so if they, would they get paid to be on that panel?
Oh, yes.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely, you have to pay them salaries.
Okay, so we'd be creating a, a layer of government?
There'll, there'll be a cost.
And, and the reason that, explain again in, in English. So the HOP?
I'm sorry.
The HOP was eliminated how long ago and why?
I think it was around 2004 or so.
Okay.
Somewhere around there.
Because there was a?
They had started with small claims.
The small claims?
Right.
And the small claims is?
That's a dilution of vote.
Right. Is it, and is that the one person, or is that small claims has more than one people?
Usually just one hearing officer.
A hearing officer.
And that person is usually, has been a, we've seen retired county appraisers serve that role, because they have a qualification. We've also seen, I think they still do this, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, the attorneys for the board also serve as hearing officer, or hearing officers.
We've seen some real estate agents, we've seen some political figures get trained and do what it wants.
Yeah, just to hold, runs a gamut.
Since we've been for the record, I'll say, I don't, I don't want to be on that HOP panel. I don't want to take the course.
Some county commissioners served on the HOP panel.
Okay, that's good for them.
I think that's what he wanted, yes.
Okay.
Okay. You got some information that you asked, that's what you're just.
Yeah.
You want the total percentage of properties that went up, increased this year and last year?
Yes.
Okay. Can I add one more thing? In the infamous time last year of the Chung, the James Chung report, kind of a, a little bit of a pie in the face for a lot of us, was that he was critical of our community bragging that the cost of living and the value of properties was so low. And of course, he's trying to, his whole theory was we need to elevate, obviously, degrees and jobs and all that stuff. But he was highly critical, more than once, which was shocking to me, that, that, that we should not have low property values as part of our sales pitch for our community, which, that's empirical information, but. Mr. Muntzer?
I think a lot of these issues can be addressed and discussed when we're interviewing our next county appraiser. Because obviously, I'm getting a lot of negative feedback from individuals in my district. But that's something that I told them, we're, we're getting into appraiser, there's going to be a, a change on the way that we are handling these year after year. So I, so I think before we start talking about a board or something different to do, we need to wait to see who we're going to hire and what their strategy is going to be in that office.
Mr. Muntzer?
Yes, thank you. I, I know last, this last budget cycle, we collected about 100, for the county, about $137 million in property tax dollars, roughly. Do we know how many dollars are collected for all jurisdictions within Sedgwick County? It's, can we just guess right now? It's probably four times that, I would guess, maybe at least three times that. So it's probably, is 600 million, roughly? So just for just point of discussion, say there's about $600 million in property tax collected. The cost of this board, I don't know what it would cost, let's say it was $30,000, $40,000 a year. But it's a service to our constituents, our, our people that pay that $600 million. And put that in, put that in perspective, if we, if we spent $30,000, $40,000 to operate this HOP board in a year to taxpayers that are paying $600 million, this is a great service to them. I don't want to, I don't want to waste dollars on, on unnecessary government. But even the small claims option is a taxpayer-funded opportunity. If, the one they do now is still taxpayer-funded, it's just what works better.
It's just at the state level.
Again, I, I think what we ought to do, we ought to estimate the total cost of this HOP board, so we know what we're talking about. And maybe we should, you know, talk to some of our constituents and find out what people want. But I've, I've, I've mentioned this numerous times in the last few months to many different groups. And they are very excited about having something different. They don't like our current processes, they think this is promising, they like the fact that we would even consider this. So before we shut this down, I think we ought to at least ask people to input and find out what the real cost is. I, I hate to have a staff meeting and present an idea and immediately shut this down without.
Why can't we wait to get a new appraiser?
We surely can.
Well, that's the plan.
But this is, this is, um, and I think having an appraiser is, is a tremendous input into this, this, this decision as well. And we're not going to do anything for this year, anyway.
No.
It'd probably be a, a next year item regardless. So we have plenty of time to get our new appraiser and to have these discussions. But we still can get the data and have the community discussions. And I think we ought to, ought to go down this path rather than just eliminate this on the front end without really giving this due diligence consideration. Thank you, Chairman.
But I think there may be other solutions than just this solution.
Okay.
Because I think the problem is bigger than just the 1,000 or 5,000 or however many appeals. And then out of that percentage, there's only a small percent that are going to keep going up beyond the initial informal appeal. So there's still dissatisfaction out there that we're not, we're not addressing if we're trying to just come up with a, a solution that meets only the needs of a couple of people. So I, I really think that as we look towards our, whoever's going to be our next appraiser, that we need that person to take a look, what is the global solution to this? And not to address one small segment of the people. Because there's a lot more dissatisfaction out there than what is going to be using this small HOP panel. Anyway, I appreciate it, Patricia, thank you very much, very informative today.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Manager, what else you have for us today?
That was it, sir, just some calendar cleanup. And I have a question for you on how you want to handle the May 1st meeting. Next week, at staff, we're going to talk about the strategic plan discussion. And that's going to be a little bit of an extended staff time, till hour and a half, two hours worth of, of time next week. Also, on Wednesday, the 27th, we're going to invite Blue Stem Gas Pipeline in to the, to the conference room to talk about their pipeline going through western Sedgwick County, any commissioners invited. We're going to make that public meeting, so any commissioners invited to attend, that's going to be at 9 o'clock. On Thursday, at 1:30, KVC is going to come in and give their presentation on their hospital remodel up on 21st Street. That's also going to be public meeting, we're going to invite city and also some Quad County partners to come view that. It's scheduled for this room, unless we get numbers too big, and then we'll adjust. And then Thursday night, of course, is the solar wind public forum. May 1st, you guys are out of town, or some of you will be out of town for a state meeting. Do you want to have a meeting on May 1, or do we want to? I mean, we can't have a meeting on May 1, do you want to have a meeting the last Wednesday of April, is the, the question? And I'll get you some dates, let me pull a calendar here. So we, it'd be 24th, yes. Do you want to have a meeting on the 24th and then not have a meeting, we won't have a meeting on May 1st?
Is that before or after Memorial Day, three day?
No, Memorial Day, April, I'm of April, sir, April 21, 4, 24.
That's April, I'm sorry, yeah. Why don't we tentatively plan for one on the 24th, and depending on what the number of items we have, if it's a very light time, why, we may not need it, but we need to find out what we've got that's important, because I don't want to skip and not cover some things that are important and put people at risk of missing suspenses.
Okay. You planning on that, then? That's all ahead, sir.
Okay, the commissioners have anything else this morning? I don't think any of the staff have anything. Yes, Mr. Spears?
We have some very exciting news. After gathering that, we have finally put together a biennial bridge inspection report, which is a federal requirement. Just a couple of factoids, like we have 604 bridges.
604?
Our average sufficiency rating, with 100 being the highest, is 85.7, which is really good. We have 37 bridges that are under sufficiency rating 50, which means they should be replaced.
And how many of those are we doing this year? Are those 37?
I think four. That does allow us to take those bridges and prioritize and build our CIP, that's how we prioritize. And all of this is objective, none of it's subjective, because when we gather the data, put it to a computer program, it's by beds and state, it's their program, it's not our program. We just gather the data, we can put it in, and then the sufficiency rating comes back. So, let's see, I think that's about, about the most important things, you know, so just want to let you know.
Good. Gail, thanks for briefing today, appreciate it. Ms. Lindsay?
You're not lucky enough to be done just yet. So David brought up bridges, and so actually, on your 4-3 agenda, we have two bond items. Again, you basically, as the Board of County Commissioners, have to say, you intend to issue bonds for projects before we start spending money on those projects. And so we have two things we'll bring to you that day. One is bridges, of course, that was included in your 2019 through 2023 CIP that was approved last year. And so there are four bridge projects that we can get into the details if you need to, worth $4 million. And then we'll also have a resolution prepared for you to approve that basically says that work that's being done on the adult detention facility for the remodel, expansion, generators, and roofs that Tanya had presented several weeks back, that also will be part of a second resolution that day. So just wanted to make sure to get that on your radar, because I know there has been some discussion about bonding for bridges.
Okay. Any other things from staff? Any of the electeds have anything, appointed?
I have one thing, we got notified last week that Deputy Coonsy, it's not that we nominated him for the National Sheriff's Association Deputy of the Year, and you received that award. So the conference for the National Associate, National Sheriff's Association is mid-June, June 15. Fly his family out there and all that stuff, and then we're already out there for the, several of us are out there for the conference itself, so. Good piece of news for.
Good. Well, I appreciate that they honored Deputy Coonsy, that's fantastic. Anyone else, any of the other electeds, appointed? Any other staff in the back of the room? Very good, well, let's go to work, thank you all.